Almighty and everlasting God presides over all things in heaven and earth. Come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom. Roll call, Ms. Payne.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
Mr. Marconi.
Here.
Mrs. McBride.
Present.
Mr. Barrett.
Here.
Mr. Belishko.
Here.
Also present is Mayor George Brown, Administrator Charlie McCormick, Assistant City Clerk Tracy Smith, Administrative Assistant Lisa Samphillip. Good evening, welcome to tonight's regular session of City Council. Please turn off all cell phones following our examples of some important council rules. They're not intended to be a complete list. Please sit here as closely as possible with a five-minute speaker presentation time limit. No persons are allowed to address the council from beyond the rail except the speaker at the dais who has the floor. Chairperson shall preserve order and decorum, prevent attacks on personalities. The chairperson shall determine all points of order. No person except city officers or their representatives shall be permitted within the rail during any meeting without the express permission of the council. And finally, when members of administration are speaking, please stand up and speak into the microphone. Anyone want to speak on pending legislation?
Sam?
Good evening and Happy New Year to everybody. Listen, I just had a comment on the two items. I see there are only two items on the agenda, but first of all, on the contract for petroleum service, I believe this was pointed out the other night by Mr. Belishko, the price of There's a differential of 10 cents, so that's evidently added on. The total price is $229, then the city's going to be paying, right? Why is that? What is that differential supposed to mean? Is that like a surcharge or something? And I was just wondering how this compares with what the city paid last year, and I assume that the same company provided the fuel last year, petroleum service? And I also assume that they were the lowest bidder, right? I have a question, again, just a general comment here on the other issue and one general comment on the issue I just brought up of this fuel contract. It seems that, again, the issue of transparency comes up. Everybody who comes to the meeting tonight gets a copy of the City Council agenda, which does not have the details that I was just handed by Ms. Smith regarding the exact price. So the exact price is not listed on the handout to most members of the public. I had to ask for mine, and I'm glad that it was furnished, and I'm glad it's printed out. But this really should be printed on the handout that's given to the general public because most of the people here don't know what the price is just by looking at this thing in the back. There's no specifics granted here. All it says is, as you can see, that related the fuel contract, fuel supply to PSC for three-year period beginning in 2023. And that brings to mind another point. Was the last contract, Mayor, also three years? And is it better for the city maybe just to, if the city did a one-year? I don't know if these questions were assessed or probed into or not, but would it be better for the city to just do a one-year contract? Would it be the same price? Because maybe, is the city locked into this $229? Because gas could, of course, gas could go up too, fuel could go up. But I assume that the city is locked into this price of $229. So what if gas goes down? Now, I know most, everybody here who puts gas in their cars paying at least another dollar, $1.20 more than this, seems like a good price. But if gas does drop, so this should drop further. So locking into a three-year contract, again, I don't know how the Georgia administration did this, or was this renewed from last year? I think these things should be revealed to the public before the council votes on it. That's not asking too much, I don't think, is it? And these are questions that should be answered because maybe the city would benefit, as I said, more from a one-year or two-year contract. And again, is it locked into this price? Because that may be a good thing, may be a bad thing. Or does it fluctuate? I don't know, I don't assume it fluctuates, but there's nothing here, even in this handout, that indicates that. Now, as far as the other issue goes, and I only have five minutes, unfortunately, there is a, this administration must be setting a record for a number of homes, for a number of properties, dilapidated properties, so to speak, demolished. Now, I could be wrong on that, but it seems like the city, this administration cannot hold itself back in terms of demolishing properties. I just want to put a rhetorical question out there. Is this the best thing for the city in general? Does, I guess in your view, Mayor, this helps to combat urban blight? Is there another alternative here? Because, I mean, this brings to mind a question. You know, when people cannot afford to pay their taxes and the home, you know, becomes neglected and maybe goes into a tax sale, the city goes through the legal procedure, which I understand is pretty complicated, to acquire these properties and intends to demolish them, and then I see that the payment of the demolishing is covered. But due to the fact that there's a tremendous homeless problem in this city, and there's a shortage of affordable housing, isn't there another alternative to continuously tearing down all these properties that are necessarily neglected so much that they need that? I would just like to put that before. I think these two issues should be really tabled until council further discusses this or find some answers. Thank you.
Sam, can you hear me?
Yes.
Every house that we've torn down so far has been inspected by an engineer, a structural engineer, and deemed a danger of falling down. The three properties that we're talking about on South Franklin Street have been inspected, and they're, they're not repairable. They're ready to fall down, they're a danger to the public. Before we do any demolition, we make sure that that is done. I don't just tear down houses to, as you said, make a record of it. They're done because they're a danger. If you went by these houses, you'll see how bad they are. They've been that way for years. We couldn't tear them down before because it was part of a bankruptcy situation. Now we're able to do this, and we're going to make sure that those houses are no longer a danger to the public. So that's why we're doing it. Every house we've torn down since our administration had been done because they were deemed a danger to the public, okay? As far as the petroleum service company, they were the only company to respond to our request for a proposal, the only one that could fill the requirements of that contract.
They required three years?
Yes. So that's why we felt that it was a good deal. You look at the price, the price is a very, very, very good price.
I'm not denying that.
Compared to what people are paying right now, so we felt that we had to have the contract locked in, and they were the only one that had applied, but also it's a very good price.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Anyone else on pending legislation? Okay, Kathy?
Okay, so we'll need a motion and a second on the consent agenda, which includes the two resolutions and the minutes.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barrett.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Brooks. Roll call, Mr. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. Marconi.
Yes.
Mrs. McBride.
Yes.
Mr. Barrett.
Yes.
Mr. Belishko.
Yes.
Motion passes. Also, presentations.
Council presentations, Councilman Brooks, anything today?
Let me just, thank you.
Councilman Marconi.
I do, just a couple. For the administration, Charlie, if you could, we had this conversation a little bit before. This vehicle driving, this vehicle driving on the sidewalk on North Main Street, I sent you the video several times. If we could just make sure someone's looking into that, please, before someone really gets hurt, we really appreciate that. And then I was wondering if you can give us some updates on some projects. North Washington Street Bridge, Sterling Hotel, Sphere Hotel, and then, of course, our ARP balance. I certainly understand if you don't have that information today, perhaps maybe our next council meeting you can provide us that information, please? Is that all okay? All right. Thank you so much, that's all I have, sir.
Councilwoman, uh, McBride?
I have nothing since Tuesday.
Councilman Barrett?
Just a question. I just saw this recent cuts on Scott Street that were done by the PA Water Company under an emergency situation. I understand that they don't have anybody coming in right now for repairs, but going back and even looking back, it seems like a lot of these pay cuts that were done, even in the fall, are falling apart. And I don't know if the utility company can be made to make permanent repairs this time of year, or whether we have to wait until sometime next year before they can make permanent repairs on main streets. And even some of the side streets, Carolina Drive, it looked like somebody just took a shovel and threw blacktop in there. I mean, it's pretty shoddy work. And I understand they're temporary, but temporary seems to be going for months. And I understand it's not easy sometimes in the wintertime, but I know that we, the city, are going out making permanent repairs to potholes. So I don't know if there are companies out there that can do this work for these contractors, but to leave these main streets in the condition they are, they're not going to get any better by spring. I don't know if we can force them to do a little bit better, or even if they have to come back and redo them again, but to throw some blocktop in some of these holes across from Home Depot on Spring Street, that's a water company cut there. It seems to be predominantly, not picking on them, but it seems to be predominantly PA Water's work there. And I don't know if we're not holding to repairing these as well as they could, or whether they're going to say, listen, we can't do it now because it's wintertime. But I just think that there's ways that we can do that. So I don't know, Charlie, if we can check on that, and I don't want to turn away from the microphone, but if we can check on that, see if there's something they can do, and I'll give you a list of them, I'll send them to you. But some of them, if you looked at them, it looked like they just, off the back of a pickup truck, it threw blacktop in there, and whatever happened, happened. On George Avenue, there's one, and John had mentioned that, and that's down to the dirt again. This is a busy street, and people are hitting these things and doing damage to their cars, and do we need to wait until April or May before they make permanent repairs? It seems a little bit inconceivable that we have to do that. But if you can just check on that, in the meantime, I'll put together the list that I have, and these are, again, utility cuts. This is no fault of the city. It's not like these roads were neglected. It's just that they came along, they had to rip them up, and that's fine, but they should be made to put them back together as quickly as possible, not half a year later.
Bill, if you want me to answer that for you?
Sure, I appreciate it.
We're having a lot, several issues with some of the utility companies, and Beth, you know this, especially on Sherman and South Street. We've been in contact with the utility companies multiple times, and we told them, if it's not repaired the right way, we're going to do it, and we're going to charge them for the work. So we've been in contact with the utility companies, and we're taking a hard line on that. Bill, you're right, we do send out our DPW guys, and they're doing a great job with the permanent patch, but it's a shame that we have to go out and patch work that's not been patched properly by utility companies. So we're looking at ways that we're going to make sure that they're going to reimburse us for that. But as long as we can get hot patch, we're going to continue to permanently repair the streets with the hot patch. Now, asphalt companies, they're up and down because of the weather. We want to do a lot better patching than we're doing now, so we're going to continue that as long as we can. And if you want to, please send us some list of new potholes. We had a listing that, and you guys are very cooperative, council was cooperative, the people were cooperative, we sent us a list of, I think it was 358 different locations of potholes, and I'm happy to say that the crew has worked on all 358, but there's more opening up. And we're sending our guys out every day unless it's raining out. So send us more listing if you would, we'll get on it. Beth, I know every council meeting I come to you and say, here's an update, but I'm giving you everything that we're being told directly by the water company. So we want to fix the roads, honest to God we do. And we're going to continue sending our crew out there as long as we can. Send us a listing if you would. I know, I just told Charlie, there's one right across the, the streets are in front of the Times Leader building, so I want to get that one fixed too. So we'll get to them, and our guys will be repairing them, and we're going to, we are going after the utility companies to do a better job. But if we have to, we'll repave the streets, and then we'll charge them.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all.
Charlie, speaking of potholes, now I requested two of them on New Alexander, front of 74. Do you still have that on the list? Okay, we'll go to Ron Felton.
Happy New Year, everyone. I'm here in response to an article written in the Times Leader back in October of last year in reference to the Wilkes-Barre Police Advisory Committee. And I responded to the call by submitting an application, which all of you have a copy of. It was this advisory committee was created out of the George Floyd incident of 2020, where there was historical protests right here in the city of Wilkes-Barre, larger protest than I had ever seen or witnessed. I just want some clarity as to whether or not this advisory committee is still active, and has it ever been staffed to capacity? Because my understanding from the article, that they were down to two members, and I checked as recently as yesterday, and they're still down to two members. And how often do they meet? Are there public records of their meetings? And the only, the only public information that I got was that article from the Times Leader and so forth. And I know that when people resign and stuff like that, they're supposed to notify you, the mayor, and I know the mayor has the job of appointing members to the committee and so forth, and you have, I believe, four members that are appointed for five years and three members that are appointed for three years. And they're supposed to, the chairperson, whoever, is supposed to notify the mayor of any resign, any people who have resigned and stuff like that. But I guess my main question, has it ever been fully staffed? And do anyone have any idea as to, the mayor, do you have any idea as to why they're such difficult? I will say this, initially, when this was proposed, myself and other civil rights leaders in this community were against it because we felt it did not provide enough independence. But I've also come to the conclusion you have to start somewhere, and it's better to have a seat at the table than not to have a seat at all. And myself, I have great relationships, starting with former police chief Barrett, police chief George, police chief De Sowie. Now, I haven't worked that much with the current police chief Coffee, but I have a good relationship with my community. I'm an outspoken advocate for my community and so forth. So I would just like to know, and I did get a, I did get a letter from the mayor's office saying that they received my application, and they explained the process, and they said the people who are chosen will be notified. So I would just like some clarity on that. Thank you.
Yeah, Ron, and thank you for applying. I'm going to tell you where we're at on this committee, but we also have other openings in different committees and boards. And I think, Beth, you brought this up a couple weeks ago, we do have, we're reviewing one of our assistants, Lisa is putting together listings of where the openings are, so we could start looking at who applied. Ron, specifically to the Police Advisory Committee, we still have a committee. As a matter of fact, Chief Coffee is arranging it right along with the police officers for the people that are still remaining on the Police Advisory Committee. They're active, we're looking at actually working on creating an office that they'll be able to work out of, okay? We have openings on it. What I'm trying to do is put people on that committee that represent all the diversities in the city, okay? We have an African-American lady in Faith Lanes on there, she does a great job. We have Andy Jerome. I'm looking for other people. We did have other minorities on there. We had people from Dominican Republic and other people. We're trying to staff it with a diverse group, okay? And that's the issue that we're having is representation of all the diversities in the city. So as we get the applications, we're going to be filling it that way, and that's the intent of it. Not that you're being taken out of the loop or anything, but I want to try and fill it with the other parts of the population, so that everyone has a voice in here. Everyone feels comfortable when you come before the committee, and if you're, let's just say, someone from the Dominican Republic, hopefully there'll be someone on that committee from Dominican Republic that you can, you know, feel, you feel comfortable talking to. That's why we're trying to hold off in just appointing people to fill the, we want to make sure that we try to appoint people from all different segments of the population. I know you work on, you're on our Fire Civil Service Commission, I thank you for that, you know, but there are other positions that are also available. If you're still thinking of something besides a police advisory, take a look at it, please. But before I fill any more people, I want to make sure on the police advisory that they do represent all the segments of minorities within the city. Okay?
Okay. I just, right now, I feel because of my experience with the NAACP, working with law enforcement, working with the community, that I more than qualify to be on the committee, and I, and if you're having difficulty getting representation, I don't see what would be wrong with having two people representing the African-American community. The African-American, Hispanic community are the two largest communities outside of the white community here in Wilkes-Barre, so.
Thank you, Ron.
That's my statement, thank you.
Council, citizens, Greg Griffin, Swarfield, Citizens Blake Committee. Just a real quick, short Blake Committee report for the new year. We're continuing to support Mayor Brown and the city with his block captains programs and hope for more expansion, particularly in the spring. Block captains are very important. I know Mayor Brown has, I think, at least 20 block captains have signed up in shirts and T-shirts and whatnot. It's very good for the quality of life in the community, so we definitely need more block captains, you know, 50 would be good, 60. There's a lot of blocks in Wilkes-Barre. I forgot my glasses, so here we go. I want to thank the councilmen and council ladies for supporting our Blake Committee over the years. You know, all the councilmen have had, have supported us on our individual cleanups in the neighborhoods. John Marconi did a great job on Biscottini Road, I think, three times, with In Camper, with Bobby Hughes. That's an outside waterways team that comes in and tries and pick up litter near streams, and there are a lot of streams now near Biscottini. Just some general news, 500 tires were just dumped in Hanover, or, and you know, we have tires dumped in Wilkes-Barre, and that's a big problem. We've been working very closely with Luzern County Council and their legislative committee to work with our state reps and state senators. What we're looking for is a litter patrolman with law enforcement authority to take the burden off the police, and the litter patrolman would be across the state, and they would be looking for litter violators and illegal dumpers. The 500 tires is a biggie, a real biggie. We think it was from a company that does, a small company that stored them up, and overnight they dumped them. It wasn't like single citizen dumpings, but Keystone Mission, we're working with Keystone Justin, and they have a nice little organization of citizens that are trying to get back in the community. And we're going to be organizing them to go throughout Wilkes-Barre on periodic cleanup. So that's going to be more strength towards the block captains program and keeping the Wilkes-Barre neighborhoods clean. But, you know, I know you all agree, crime starts with litter, and when you see a neighborhood start to deteriorate, tire on a tree lawn, a couch, bags of ripped open trash, and it's not adhered to or attended to, the neighborhood becomes deteriorated. And people, good people tend to want to move out then. So what we're trying to do is tell the people to hold in place, join a block team, block captains program, which the mayor has sponsored, and fight for your neighborhood because there's nowhere really to go. I mean, if you move away from Wilkes-Barre, where are you going to go? I mean, how can you afford any property if you move out of Swarfield because the west side's getting littered? So we're telling people, stand strong, hold the line. If there's litter in front of your house, you know, you have to go out and pick it up because it becomes a refrigerator, or a tire, or a junk car. And, you know, we have to work with code more. Code has to get on these apartments, they're supposed to have dumpsters, I think, I forget how many apartments, five or whatever, and some of these big apartments have to have dumpsters because, or the dumpsters are not big enough, they're overflowing. So that's a real problem for rats and rodents, and it's the quality of life issue. And you look at the communities where it's spotless, there's less crime. And there's correlation there, less litter, less crime. And, you know, we got to reach the children, more programs to go into children, in the schools to tell them, you know, how bad litter is. Of course, the children are very receptive to that, and they learn real quick. Some of the children have been on our crews. So I just want to thank council, city administration, and Mayor Brown. You're doing what you can do. More has to be done, and the county has to get involved as a leadership for all the municipalities. So thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Hey, Greg.
Thanks for everything you do.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, Greg, absolutely, thank you for, and also thank you for helping on the access road as well, several times, both of us have done that, and throughout the city and throughout the county. We really appreciate your efforts.
You know, I'm retired, I mean, like, I don't have a life. I mean, I got to do something.
Sam Troy?
So just like to continue my push for this body and for the administration to have a little more empathy for the common man, the normal, the taxpayers of this city on whom, as I see it, this budget is balanced. As most of you know, and all of you know, I was, I was not exactly in favor of the budget that was recently passed, even though there was no tax increase. I was not satisfied as somebody who has suffered economically because of the COVID and along with a lot of other people. Hundreds of, if not thousands of other people in this community have taken it on the chin, so to speak, to use a boxing metaphor, over the past two years or so. And I don't think that you people or the mayor have enough empathy. So in order to address that problem or that situation, I would like to make a couple suggestions, which I know probably will fall on deaf ears, but I would like, I broached this subject with Mr. Henry. Could the city possibly adopt the Homestead Act to allow some tax relief for people who qualify? Now, as you know, the county once had that in effect, they did away with it. The school district has it, Wilkes-Barre School District. One good thing about the Wilkes-Barre School District is there aren't too many good things, but that's one good thing. And I would like, council, I mean, Mr. Henry's not going to do it if I tell him, but he has to have a directive from the mayor or some of you people, to at least look into that. As far as I know, there are no financial repercussions to the city if the city does choose to, and I don't know how many other municipalities have it, but it would at least bring some relief. Now, I advocated, as you know, Mayor and council, when that budget was passed, for you to at least allow for senior citizens and people on fixed incomes or people who are economically disadvantaged, which include a hell, a pretty sizable percentage of the general populace of this city, as far as I know. I don't know what the exact percentage is, but you know we're living in a quote-unquote depressed area, so, and that's, when I was growing up, that was the stigma that was attached to this area, and I think it still is. So what can be done for relief? So I offered some specific suggestions. At least give seniors and economically disadvantaged people on limited incomes extra time to pay their property taxes, like another month, and still get. their property taxes, like another month, and to, and still get the discount. I don't think that's asking an outrageous amount of things, an outrageous thing to do that, but nope, all I got was stone faces when I, when I advocated that. I was surprised. This is an election year, you know, you guys, and I don't know, a couple of you, I don't know if you're up for reelection, but I assume the majority is. And I'm going to bring that issue up, whether I'm a candidate or not, to other people who are candidates. That this city has not done enough to relieve, and I don't care, I know, Mayor, you've done, you've done, given that, you've had some programs, you gave out the $300, you had the renovation projects that people could get reimbursed by the city for renovating homes and buying appliances and stuff like that. I don't think it goes far enough. You know, people are really, some people are really suffering in this community, can't even put food on the table, or have a hard time doing that. So I think there's a lot more we can do. And we, if you don't think you could find the money, form a committee, mayor and ad hoc committee. I'm sure there are people here and maybe some other citizens who will come forward and volunteer for that, to look into ways the budget could be cut to save some expenditure, to save some expenditures. For instance, the health department, which I think is, is overblown with staff. The general agreement for health insurance, I think, was way excessive. I don't think there was enough, enough commitment on the part of this administration to get that down. Now, my final item on this, since, again, time is limited, I want to, I wonder if I can get some answers from the mayor or Mr. McCormick or somebody on council. I'm a little concerned as a, as a, somebody who does believe in this city. What are the status of those two major projects? I think they're, I have this feeling, this terrible visceral feeling, that they're dead in the water. The one, the Sterling, where there was an article in the Times Leader not too long ago that the owner of that property has reneged on a $10,000 payment, supposed to make to the city for six months, there was no written agreement, et cetera, et cetera. He's looking for financial aid, he hasn't gotten any. The one on North Hampton Street, the, all the equipment was pulled. I know you people will probably disagree, but I would like, and I, I am in favor of those historical structures standing, if that's what's in the way of those, of that development. And I don't know if the city really needs that kind of development in the first place, but I don't know if you have any response to that, Mayor. Those two projects seem to me that, seem to be, maybe we should, the city should be looking into a reversionary clause, but I heard that was canceled in the terms of the Sterling project? There's no reversionary clause anymore? Okay, that's all I have. If you want to comment on that, fine. If not.
Sam, the two projects you're talking about, the Sphere, which is on North Hampton Street, we're actually in litigation over that right now.
Litigation?
The construction was, was halted because of a lawsuit that's going on. We cannot do any more on that until that is, that is heard in the court, adjudicated. Secondly, the site at the Sterling, we've been meeting with people on that about funding, and it's ongoing. We still have more meetings set up for the next several weeks. So I want to get it built as much as you do. Believe me, I do. It's going to be a great addition to the city with the convention center and other things. But we're working through that the best we can. And I'm hoping that over the next several weeks, we can clear up some of the little negatives that are holding us up for right now. And we're working on it, we are. But the one, like I said, we can't do any more until it goes through the court system and it gets.
What that Homestead Act, Mayor?
Yeah, I'd have to discuss that with Mr. Henry.
Sam, I believe we'd, we'd have a huge tax increase if we brought that.
What's that?
You know, we didn't have a tax increase for '23 in the budget, '22. If, if it was in that budget, we would, we would definitely have a big tax increase for '23.
Can't do anything this year, in other words.
Pardon?
Can't do anything this year.
No, absolutely, no, no. Can't do it this year. The budget's already made.
I have to check the legalities also, Mr. Henry, if we can actually even do that.
Thank you.
John Sahasky?
John Sahasky, Almond Lane. You and Mr. Mayor, Mr. Felton, you guys were talking about diversity. City Hall, like you were saying, like, the two biggest minority communities are the black and the Hispanic communities. When's the last time that City Hall has hired a African-American or Hispanic to be working inside of City Hall? That's all I have about that. This Sterling property, now, like, I, I was talking about, like, why are we doing business with George Albert when these people seem to lie to us? And then it seems that another lies come, came out. Like, when they were here, they were talking all this good things, that they're going to build this property, it's not going to take long, it's going to be privately funded, we're not going to come in front of the city asking for, for money, which Mr. Mayor just proved that they're lying again, that they're asking, they're looking for funding that they were claiming that they had. You could go, anybody could go back and watch the tape and see that they were putting out that they had the funding. So like, like, last time, the last meeting when you guys voted to give, you know, do business with Mr. Albert, that's why I was confused by that, because it seems like these guys just constantly lie, and then we still do business with them. Over and over again, these guys are just, you know, between, Mr., well, it's, it's more of, Mr. Albert's not telling the lies, he's just there. It's, it's more of Baruch. Baruch's the one who's, who spins every lie there is. I don't, I don't know how that man can be trusted when it's, you could clearly go back and look on these tapes, they said that they were going to give us $10,000 a year. They said that. You guys were here. They fleeced you guys. They really fleeced you guys. Minus Beth, you voted no, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, Beth was the only no vote. But you guys, you guys got fleeced on that one. You know, they said that they were going to do all these things, and they did not hold their bar, hold up anything. And I do not understand why we pulled back on that reverter clause, because these guys obviously lied, and they're playing all these games, like, I, I don't know if these guys are ever going to get it built. I'd love for them to get it built. I'd love to bartend there at their place when they get it built. I'm sure they'd throw my application in the trash, but, you know, these guys don't seem like serious business people, or at least not on the scale that they put out. So, you know, I'd like to hear from the city council members who voted for this, and, you know, I know Mr. Belisco, maybe like two years ago, you, I asked about this then, and you said you felt like they lied to you. I'd like to hear from the rest of you guys who, minus Beth and Mr. Belisco, because I, I got how you felt before. But I, I just really don't, I don't believe them. And it's been years. They, they made it out like that building was going to be up soon. And they're mad about that they couldn't get revenue from parking because they wanted to undercut us on parking, on a lot that they don't have paved or anything. I think those guys are a joke, and if you guys keep taking them seriously, all we're going to have over there is an empty lot for a long time. I, just a comment on this, this police show. Do we really think that that is going to put the city in the best of lights? Like, it's not a criticism of the police, you know, it's not the police's fault, they just show up and, you know, they work and, you know, cover the crimes and do what they can. But I don't think that we want to put some of the crimes that happen here on national TV and give the country the image, that image of the city. I mean, I don't know. But that's what we're doing right now with this show, is we're, we're selling ourselves for ratings, and I'm, I'm sure they're going to put anything that's juicy out there. And it's not going to make, I don't think it'll make us look good. Up to here, anybody's opinion on that. And Washington Street Bridge, like, that's been saying, you know, when Mike Merritt was here, he was saying he was working on it, and he was doing all these things. He's retired for years, nothing happened. Butch has been saying it's going to happen for years, it's happened for years, he's retired. So, you know, are we ever going to get this bridge on Washington Street, or is it going to be like the Hotel Sterling thing where nothing happens? Because it seems, nothing ever seems to happen with these projects here. And I don't know, it's just frustrating. But I'd really like to hear from you guys, especially the council people who voted on that, to feel like if you guys have been lied to and fleeced by these people with this Sterling project. That's all I have. Thank you. And, and the diversity thing about how, when was the last time the city hired a African-American or Hispanic to work inside of City Hall?
Anything, counsel?
So, yeah, I'll, I'll jump in here real quick. I believe the Sterling Hotel that was voted on the last term, so I was not included on that. I think it was in '18, maybe?
'18, where you're not, yeah, you, okay, okay, my bad.
I do think you have some great questions, though, John, you know? And, and I, I just asked the same question, too, about Sphere. I asked the same question about Sterling, and I asked the same question about the Washington Street Bridge.
Yeah, you hit two out of four of my points that I wrote down.
Right, right. So at least we're thinking the same, right?
Yes, yes.
And, and by the way, thank you for everything you do with DPW. I, I think all you guys do a great job. You know, the, the mayor and the administration, you know, they, they had talked about the North Washington Street Bridge, you know, moving forward. It's very frustrating to myself. I know it's very frustrating to you. I'm sure it's very frustrating to, to the administration and everybody on council as well. And hopefully next week, I'm sorry, our next council meeting, Mr. McCormick and, and the mayor, they'll, they'll have some more information on those, those three or four items that I asked as well. Thanks.
Anyone else? Mayor?
Yeah, John, we hired a Latino lady in the OCD department about four months ago. People have to apply for the jobs that we have. The positions are listed on city website. People want to work for the city, fill out an application. I can't tell you, we get a lot of applications, but when we do, we review them. And like I said, we just hired a young lady four months ago. So I keep saying to people, fill out an application. I spoke to about 50 Latino people, it was about a month ago, and the same message I gave to those people, and it was a mixed group. It was, you know, different sects of Latino population. And I told them, I said, "Apply. Apply for the jobs that we have out there. We're happy to, to interview you and see how you can, you know, consider you for positions." People have to apply. As far as the Washington Street Bridge, I'll give you somewhat of an update. We have a new state senator, his name is Marty Flynn. We've been, I met with Marty Flynn's senior staff. We actually have a meeting tomorrow with PennDOT, but it's also a federal issue, it's not just a state issue at PennDOT. So there's also parts of that are falling to the federal government. So what we do is, this week, we've met several times, Mr. Flynn has given his support, and we are now in the part, after he supported us, we have a meeting tomorrow with PennDOT. But it's being held up for several different reasons, okay? There's people that are going to possibly be displaced and other things that all have to be worked out. But the next step is meeting with PennDOT tomorrow, and then meeting with the federal government. So it's not something that we don't want done. I mean, when I ran for mayor, you know, I know that was the first thing that people told me up in that district, see what you can do about getting Washington Street Bridge done. It's been our priority for the last three years. We're held up by several, as I said, other entities, meaning the state and federal government. We want it done. I want it done, too. So we're taking another approach. And I'm going to tell you, Senator Marty Flynn has been a wonderful resource for us in trying to get this effort done. So it's continuing, it's a number one priority for us, okay? So we're doing everything we can do. Now that we have, like I said, a new center involved, and we're getting the federal government involved, too.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Brooks, Mr. Barrett, about the Sterling project and if you guys felt like these were fleeced?
I'm hope, I'm hopeful to see that come about, as you are and everybody here in this room. I know that there was some disagreement with the parking authority and use of the land for parking, and I think that was, from my understanding, the reason for that $10,000 change in funding. And, America, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's my understanding. When, when that came about, the parking authority was not too happy about people parking on that lot without them receiving revenue. And when that stopped, there was some sort of arbitration or something occurred there, and some sort of legal proceeding occurred, and I think that is the reason why that changed. But I agree that that project needs to move forward sooner than later. I know that they have commitments, financial commitments from the federal government and other entities for the project, but it's not enough to complete the project. However, that being said, it still doesn't need to move forward. I'm hopeful that this year we see something other than a sign on the corner with a picture on it. It really needs to happen. So we're all in agreement with you, John. It's not that we don't want to see it happen. We all would love to stand there and have you behind the bar and stand on the rooftop there and look out over the river, and it would be a wonderful day for the city. So just hoping that it's sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Kadavaski?
Before I start, I'd just like to say thank you to Councilman Belisco for allowing people to go back and forth.
A little bit.
Very, very productive. I'd like to play something for you, a night in the light of what the Wilkes-Barre police put up with. And I hope you'll let me play this whole video.
This nigga pulled me over because I was fucking black, bro. This fucking cracker pulled me over because I was fucking black.
Now, hold it. This is my right to play this. This is what our police put up with. I have the right.
This fucking cracker, you know, give me a sign this shit. So I'm a dickhead, dawg, nigga.
I quit on playing my video.
No phones are required to be off.
You're violating, hold on a second. Hold on, hold on.
Let's not do this dance, Bob.
Hold on a second. I have the right to come down here and play this video. Now, the police are criticized on, this happened on Hill Street, where two police officers were verbally abused for over six minutes with this filth, and I want people to hear, and I have my right to play this video. I have the right to play it.
Language, language or not.
Well, I can't help what they say. This is what I want people to know.
I'm telling you.
Hold it, Mike.
It's your choice.
Hold it. The Superior Court just held up a ruling today on a lady that was cited over the.
No phones are to be off.
But it's my, it's a recorder, a tape recorder. It's a tape recorder. I have to play this video. You have to do this. This is my right to play it. I want people to hear what our police put up with.
Officer, officer, please remove.
Tell the fucking truth, right? If I was driving, you would have switched the whole car ready, right? Just because I'm fucking black.
All right, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, I'll go into my other presentation. I'll go into the other presentation.
No, you're gone.
No, wait a minute.
You're gone.
Hey, hold it.
Anything else, council?
Hold on a second. You're violating my rights, Mr. Belisco. I'm already suing you. Now, I have, I said I won't play the video. I abrade that. I want to address council, because I want to find out if Mr. Marconi is getting $40,000 a year for healthcare, plus you're getting us, you're violating my rights, and I'm getting sick of it. I'm going to sue you. I'm going to sue you. You have no right to do this. I had the right to play that video. Right, I have the right. Now, I'll tell you what, you better cite me, cite me, cite me, no, because I'm violating. I want to play this video of how our police are abused. And my folks here, they should hear.